This is a hearing of the Subcommittee on General Farm Commodities and Risk Management to discuss the implementation of Agriculture Act of 2014, the commodity policy, and crop insurance will come to order. I want to thank Michael for being here, our Undersecretary of Farm and Foreign Agricultural Service. He's got quite the title. Michael, I had a chance to meet for the first time yesterday, or day before, and I told him we were going to beat him about the head and shoulders really difficult today. I was teasing him about the setup here. We've got this august body sitting up here. We've got him way down there at a lower table, so we're looking down on him. It's the one time that Congress has advantage over the administrative branch, or the executive branch, and we take full advantage of that. So it's, Mike, good to have you. It's been five months since the farm bill became law. The purpose of this hearing is to evaluate the implementation of the commodity and crop insurance titles. And again, I welcome Undersecretary Skews with us this morning. The commodity title provisions of previous farm bills included direct payments, countercyclical payments, acre and sure, were repealed by the 2014 farm bill. These provisions were replaced by a choice of two policies that will only trigger when a producer suffers a loss. During consideration of the farm bill, the Congressional Budget Office predicted that the reduced spending under that bill will be something on the order of $18.4 billion. These budget savings and reforms came with the promise of enhanced risk management tools under crop insurance. I understand the lift that the Department has in implementing these provisions. I appreciate the complications involved, and that's why the farm bill provided extra funds to the agencies. And I will commend the Department for the efforts so far, but I want to challenge the Department to fully develop, fully deliver on the promises of the farm bill. The Department's assurance of a timely, if only partial, implementation of the Supplemental Coverage Act is appreciated. We appreciate the RMA Administrator, Brandon Willis, for working to ensure that the SEO is properly implemented. And we hope to learn more today about the Department's plans for full implementation of SEO for all crops and counties as required by the farm bill. We are encouraged by RMA's efforts to move forward with the crop margin coverage, enterprise units by practice, coverage levels by practice, stacks, beginning farmer and rancher provisions, and the peanut revenue coverage. The Committee appreciates that there is an effort to get the job done on each of these fronts. And while some delays are understandable, we hope they're held to a minimum. I'm deeply troubled, though, over the Department's handling of two very important issues that we'll discuss today. The first is the average production history adjustments that will provide critical relief for those struggling through severe drought for a number of years. And the second is the rollout of the conservation compliance, which I fear will undermine crop insurance and our overall conservation goals if the approach is overly punitive. There are farmers and ranchers who have experienced severe drought for three years. Many remain in severe drought this year, and a good many of these areas are in D4 drought conditions. Despite all this, we understand that the Department intends to administratively delay APH adjustments and relief until 2016, which would be the third year of our five-year farm bill. I respectfully urge the Department to respond to this natural disaster in states like Texas and Oklahoma, New Mexico and Colorado, and other states around the country with the same speed and determination as one would expect in the case of a wildfire or hurricane. On other farm bill provisions where the Department has said it can only partially implement a provision on time, we hope to exhibit patience. All we ask is on APH, is it some effort be made to partially implement the provision in time for the 2015 crop year where relief is needed the most? Beyond providing immediate relief to farmers and ranchers who hit the hardest, timely action might help insulate the Department from legal challenges. The APH adjustment is meant to be self-executing. Farmers were not meant to have to ask permission to exclude qualifying yields. The right is to producers, and it became the producer's right on the day the farm bill became law. My second concern regards conservation compliance. This was never a smart provision, and the interim rule explains why many of us were so concerned with it. For example, page 11 of the rule says that if a farmer plants a crop next spring and is found to be noncompliant on June 1st, even if he or she were to come back into compliance by July 1st, within a month, the farmer would still be denied premium support for 2016. This effectively means no insurance. As bad as the compliance provision is, the objective was to impose the penalty in the following year, and only if the producer did not come back into compliance. I maintain that farmers are our best conservationists. They know their land, and they know better than you and I how to keep it productive. From my experience, farmers are at their best by making conservation investments when they are profitable. This provision, as interpreted by the Department, along with the EPA's new Waters of the U.S. regulation, are just two examples of why farmers and ranchers are scared to death about the regulatory overreach of the administration. Finally, on two positive notes, I want to commend the Administrator of the Farm Service Agency, Juan Garcia, for his exemplary work in implementing the livestock disaster assistance. We hit some bumps along the road early on, but this was the first rule out of the gate, and it turned out well. We really appreciate Juan and his team's excellent work. And second, I want to commend the Secretary for his role that he played in securing passage of the farm bill and his responsiveness during this implementation. Fully implementing the farm bill in a timely way not only fulfills a pledge to farmers and ranchers, but it honors the work that the Secretary did to help the farm bill happen. And now I'll recognize my good friend, ranking member David Scott, for any remarks he may have.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. And let me thank you for putting this very critical hearing together focusing on crop insurance. I'm mainly concerned with Title I and Title XI. Of course, Title I defines the commodities, the peanuts, rice, soybeans, wheat, corn, so forth. Title XI specifically enhances the coverage of the permanently authorized federal insurance program. It's very important for us to understand that this farm bill completely, completely changes the way in which farmers receive assistance now. Farmers must now make a decision as to which crop insurance program they will sign on to this fall, either the agricultural risk coverage, ARC, or price loss coverage, PLC. And then, once the farmers make that decision, they are committed to it for five years. For this reason, it is critical that we take the time, make sure our farmers and our producers get the correct information, the right information, so they can make the right decisions. And specifically, I want to start with Title XI. There's been great concern, and Chairman Conway has already alluded to it, regarding the Risk Management Agency, which largely administers a federal crop insurance program. The issue is why the RMA imposes what is known as downward trending adjustment on the actual production history, or the APH, in Georgia and South Carolina while waiving this requirement on all the other states. That's not right. In the case of South Carolina, in the case of Georgia peach producers, the APH of the produce is based on the preceding five years of the actual production history. However, in Georgia, in South Carolina, peach growers, the proven yield of the producers that comprise their APH are then administratively adjusted downward by the RMA. And this effect of this downward adjustment makes for a reduction in the yield levels that the producer may ensure. This works a tremendous hardship on the peach producers in my state of Georgia, where I represent here in Congress for 12 years, represented in the state legislature and the state senate for 20, represented in the state representative house for eight. That's 40 years. Then on top of that, I was born in South Carolina, grew up on a farm there. So when you talk about Georgia and you talk about South Carolina, you're hitting David Scott right in the heart. So we need to get a better understanding from the Undersecretary today. We understand the theory behind the downward adjustment is that it's, they say it's necessary in order for an insurance guarantee to be consistent with the production expectations for the peach crop, which is anticipated to be lower in the earlier years of perennial crop. However, any lower yield associated with a peach crop is already reflected in the APH of the Georgia and South Carolina producers, which is based on its five-year history. Therefore, this downward trending adjustment is unnecessary, it's punitive, it's discriminatory to Georgia and South Carolina peach growers. This is not right, and we've got to correct it, Mr. Undersecretary. As I mentioned, the downward trending adjustment has been waived in each of the 2011 through 2014 crop years for the producers of perennial crops, including peaches, in states from Maine to North Carolina. However, the same relief was not granted to my farmers in Georgia or in South Carolina. South Carolina and Georgia peach growers suffered a devastating freeze in March, costing millions of dollars in losses, losses that were exacerbated by the RMA's discriminatory treatment. And this downward trending adjustment must be waived also for Georgia and South Carolina as they are in states from Maine to North Carolina. All we're asking for is to be treated equal. And as my granddaddy used to say on the farm, "We all want to be fed out the same spoon." Now, my other concern is with regards to peanuts. And again, Title XI. The 2014 farm bill contains provisions providing for what is called revenue assurance, specifically for peanut farmers, beginning with the 2015 crop year. Funds for this initiative were included in the existing farm bill. We need to know more about this program. We need to know how much money is in the program. We need to get a clearer understanding of how this money, these funds, will be used, the accessibility and benefit for our peanut farmers. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, we're here at this hearing today because of these changes. I just briefly want to highlight how dramatic these are. Number one, direct and countercyclical payment programs and the state-based revenue program known as ACRE or ACRE, Average Crop Revenue Enhancement Program, have all been eliminated. And in their place, as I mentioned earlier, a farmer now has to choose one of two farm programs that begin with the 2014 crop year. One, price loss coverage, and what this program does, it makes a payment to a producer when the market price for a covered crop is below a fixed reference price. Or there's the agricultural risk coverage, ARC, a program that makes a payment when either the farm's revenue from all crops or the county's revenue from a crop, the farmer has to choose the alternative, is below 86% of the predetermined bench value. Together, it's important that we have these programs, and a highlight is that the savings should be $16.6 million. And finally, it is important for us to recognize our cotton growers, who are no longer coming under these programs, but we put a different program in called the Stacked Income Protection Program for Upland Cotton Acreage, and it is an additional area revenue plan that a cotton producer may use alone or in combination. And finally, the second program, the supplemental coverage option, provides all crop producers with the option of purchase. So we've got a lot of issues here. I look forward to this hearing, Mr. Secretary. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Appreciate those comments. We'll now recognize the Chairman of the Committee, Frank Lucas, for any comments he might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the Secretary's
... goals if the approach is overly punitive. There are farmers and ranchers who have experienced severe drought for three years. Many remain in severe drought this year, and a good many of these areas are in D4 drought conditions. Despite all this, we understand that the department intends to administratively delay APH adjustments and relief until 2016, which would be the third year of our five-year farm bill. I respectfully urge the department to respond to this natural disaster in states like Texas and Oklahoma, New Mexico and Colorado, and other states around the country with the same speed and determination as one would expect in the case of a wildfire or hurricane. On other farm bill provisions where the department has said it can only partially implement a provision on time, we hope to exhibit patience. All we ask is on APH, is that some effort be made to partially implement the provision in time for the 2015 crop year where relief is needed the most? Beyond providing immediate relief to farmers and ranchers who hit the hardest, timely action might help insulate the department from legal challenges. The APH adjustment is meant to be self-executing. Farmers were not meant to have to ask permission to exclude qualifying yields. The right is to producers, and it became the producer's right on the day the farm bill became law. My second concern regards conservation compliance. This was never a smart provision, and the interim rule explains why many of us were so concerned with it. For example, page 11 of the rule says that if a farmer plants a crop next spring and is found to be noncompliant on June 1st, even if he or she were to come back into compliance by July 1st, within a month, the farmer would still be denied premium support for 2016. This effectively means no insurance. As bad as the compliance provision is, the objective was to impose the penalty in the following year, and only if the producer did not come back into compliance. I maintain that farmers are our best conservationists. They know their land, and they know better than you and I how to keep it productive. From my experience, farmers are at their best by making conservation investments when they are profitable. This provision, as interpreted by the department, along with the EPA's new Waters of the U.S. regulation, are just two examples of why farmers and ranchers are scared to death about the regulatory overreach of the administration. Finally, on two positive notes, I want to commend the administrator of the Farm Service Agency, Juan Garcia, for his exemplary work in implementing the livestock disaster assistance. We hit some bumps along the road early on, but this was the first rule out of the gate, and it turned out well. We really appreciate Juan and his team's excellent work. And second, I want to commend the secretary for his role that he played in securing passage of the farm bill and his responsiveness during this implementation. Fully implementing the farm bill in a timely way not only fulfills a pledge to farmers and ranchers, but it honors the work that the secretary did to help the farm bill happen. And now I'll recognize my good friend, ranking member David Scott, for any remarks he may have.
Thank you, Chairman Conway. And let me thank you for putting this very critical hearing together focusing on crop insurance. I'm mainly concerned with Title I and Title 11. Of course, Title I defines the commodities, the peanuts, rice, soybeans, wheat, corn, so forth. Title 11 specifically enhances the coverage of the permanently authorized federal insurance program. It's very important for us to understand that this farm bill completely changes the way in which farmers receive assistance now. Farmers must now make a decision as to which crop insurance program they will sign on to this fall, either the agricultural risk coverage, A R C, or price loss coverage, P L C. And then, once the farmers make that decision, they are committed to it for five years. For this reason, it is critical that we take the time, make sure our farmers and our producers get the correct information, the right information, so they can make the right decisions. And specifically, I want to start with Title 11. There's been great concern, and Chairman Conway has already alluded to it, regarding the Risk Management Agency, which largely administers the federal crop insurance program. The issue is why the RMA imposes what is known as downward trending adjustment on the actual production history or the APH in Georgia and South Carolina while waiving this requirement on all the other states. That's not right. In the case of South Carolina, in the case of Georgia peach producers, the APH of the producers is based on the preceding five years of the actual production history. However, in Georgia, in South Carolina, peach growers, the proven yield of the producers that comprise their APH are then administratively adjusted downward by the RMA, and this effect of this downward adjustment makes for a reduction in the yield levels that the producer may ensure. This works a tremendous hardship on the peach producers. In my state of Georgia, where I represent here in Congress for 12 years, represented in the state legislature and the state senate for 20, represented in the state representative house for eight, that's 40 years. Then on top of that, I was born in South Carolina, grew up on a farm there. So when you talk about Georgia and you talk about South Carolina, you're hitting David Scott right in the heart. So we need to get a better understanding from the undersecretary today. We understand the theory behind the downward adjustment is that it's, they say it's necessary in order for an insurance guarantee to be consistent with the production expectations for the peach crop, which is anticipated to be lower in the earlier years of perennial crop. However, any lower yield associated with a peach crop is already reflected in the APH of the Georgia and South Carolina producers, which is based on its five-year history. Therefore, this downward trending adjustment is unnecessary, it's punitive, it's discriminatory to Georgia and South Carolina peach growers. This is not right, and we've got to correct it, Mr. Undersecretary. As I mentioned, the downward trending adjustment has been waived in each of the 2011 through 2014 crop years for the producers of perennial crops, including peaches, in states from Maine to North Carolina. However, the same relief was not granted to my farmers in Georgia or in South Carolina. South Carolina and Georgia peach growers suffered a devastating freeze in March, costing millions of dollars in losses, losses that were exacerbated by the RMA's discriminatory treatment. And this downward trending adjustment must be waived also for Georgia and South Carolina as they are in states from Maine to North Carolina. All we're asking for is to be treated equal. And as my granddaddy used to say on the farm, "We all want to be fed out the same spoon." Now, my other concern is with regards to peanuts. And again, Title 11, the 2014 farm bill contains provisions providing for what is called revenue assurance, specifically for peanut farmers, beginning with the 2015 crop year. Funds for this initiative were included in the existing farm bill. We need to know more about this program. We need to know how much money is in the program. We need to get a clearer understanding of how this money, these funds, will be used, the accessibility and benefit for our peanut farmers. In conclusion, Mr. Chairman, we're here at this hearing today because of these changes. I just briefly want to highlight how dramatic these are. Number one, direct and countercyclical payment programs and the state-based revenue program known as ACRE, or Acre, Average Crop Revenue Enhancement Program, have all been eliminated. And in their place, as I mentioned earlier, a farmer now has to choose one of two farm programs that begin with the 2014 crop year. One, price loss coverage, and what this program does, it makes a payment to a producer when the market price for a covered crop is below a fixed reference price. Or there's the agricultural risk coverage, A R C, a program that makes a payment when either the farm's revenue from all crops or the county's revenue from a crop, the farmer has to choose the alternative is below 86% of the predetermined bench value. Together, it's important that we have these programs, and a highlight is that the savings should be $16.6 million. And finally, it is important for us to recognize our cotton growers, who are no longer coming under these programs, but we put a different program in called the stacked income protection program for upland cotton acreage, and it is an additional area revenue plan that a cotton producer may use alone or in combination. And finally, the second program, the supplemental coverage option, provides all crop producers with the option of purchase. So we've got a lot of issues here. I look forward to this hearing, Mr. Secretary. Thank you very much for coming, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, David. Appreciate those comments. We'll now recognize the chairman of the committee, Frank Lucas, for any comments he might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Secretary Skuse, I appreciate your being here today, and I appreciate all of the hard work that you and your staff have been doing over the last several months. The Agricultural Act of 2014 is a shift to do more risk-based safety net. Gone are the days of making payments regardless of market conditions. Congress gave you a large task, and I appreciate the willingness of the secretary and the department to listen and act when problems arise. The secretary and you have worked with this committee on issues that have risen in the livestock disaster programs, and many of the improvements Congress made to the crop insurance title, and I sincerely thank you for that. That being said, I am concerned about a few key insurance problems, which Chairman Conway has already highlighted. Producers in my state pay incredibly high premiums for their crop insurance coverage, often much higher than their colleagues in other parts of the country. For example, compared to wheat producers in your home state of Delaware, wheat producers in Oklahoma pay almost three times more for their crop insurance coverage. We have more yield variability in Oklahoma, so we pay higher rates. That's understandable, at least to a degree. But after years of prolonged drought, we are now paying much higher rates. To add insult to injury, the amount of production my producers can ensure has been decimated as well, even though that loss in yield was through no fault of their own. The second factor is precisely why I included the APH factor in the farm bill. For anyone who's facing the prospect of drought or who's been suffering for years through prolonged drought, this provision is designed to provide immediate relief. We're almost finished with wheat harvest in Oklahoma. Four years of drought combined with widespread freeze damage have yielded one of the worst crops in state history. The APH adjustment would provide widespread relief for wheat producers planting and ensuring their crops this fall. Congress was clear, all producers who have been affected by drought should be able to exclude those years. They should be able to do so immediately. I understand their challenges, but I think producers affected by drought deserve the effort. Again, I thank you for all that you've done and look forward to working together in the future to ensure that our producers have the full benefits of the new safety net that we all worked so hard together to provide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Peterson is not here. The chair requests that other members submit their opening statements for the record so that our witnesses may begin their testimony and to assure there's ample time for questions. I would welcome to our witness table today the Honorable Michael T. Skuse, Undersecretary of Farm and Foreign Agriculture Services, United States Department of Agriculture, Washington, D.C. Michael, the floor is yours for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Lucas, Chairman Conway, ranking member Scott, and members of the subcommittee, I am pleased to be here today to update you on the United States Department of Agriculture's progress in implementing the commodity and crop insurance titles of the 2014 farm bill. The new farm bill improves the safety net for producers, expands crop insurance tools, and continues our market development programs. Implementations of these programs is a top priority for USDA. In the roughly five months since enactment, USDA has made considerable progress in implementing key provisions. USDA's first priority was to implement the disaster relief programs for livestock producers. LFP, LIP, ELAP, and TAP were implemented in 60 days. As of July 2nd, USDA has provided more than $1.2 billion under LFP and LIP to livestock producers. On June 9th, CRP continuous sign-up was restarted, as was the CRP transition incentives payment for beginning and socially disadvantaged producers. In lieu of a general sign-up this year, we're allowing producers with CRP contracts expiring in September to receive a one-year contract extension. Another priority for USDA and FSA is helping producers understand ARC, PLC, Margin Protection Program for Dairy, and NAP buy-up programs, and what these programs mean for them and their families. On May 29th, USDA announced awards totaling $6 million to our university partners for the development of online decision tools and producer education on these programs. The University of Illinois and the University of Missouri with Texas A&amp;M will simplify complex decisions that producers need to make by easy-to-use tools that producers can access on their home computers. State extension specialists will be trained on these tools and host meetings to educate producers later this fall. This summer, FSA plans to provide producers information on their current base acres, yields, and 2009 to 2012 planting history, and offer them an opportunity to verify this information with their local Farm Service Agency office. Later this fall, there will be an opportunity to update yields and reallocate bases, the critical first step in implementing ARC and PLC. By mid-winter, all producers on a farm will be required to make a one-time unanimous election between price protection, county revenue protection, and individual revenue protection for the 2014 through 2018 crop years. By early 2015, producers can expect to sign contracts for ARC and PLC for the 2014 and 2015 crop years. FSA plans to implement the Margin Protection Program for Dairy by September 1st. The committee can also expect to see a proposed definition of significant contribution of active personal management later this year. Crop insurance has become an increasingly important component of the farm safety net. Due to efforts that RMA began last summer, a whole farm revenue protection program was approved by FCIC in May. RMA expects information about this program to be available in time for producers to make decisions for the 2015 crop sales. Last week, RMA published an interim rule on seven sections of the farm bill. That rule will apply to producers as soon as this fall, including beginning farmer and rancher provisions, the authority to correct errors and make late payments, and restrictions for producers who plant on native side. RMA expects to offer enterprise units for irrigated and non-irrigated crops and coverage levels by practice for the 2015 spring crops. APH adjustment will be available for crops planted in the fall of 2015. The rule links eligibility for any premium subsidy paid by FCIC on a policy or plan of federally reinsured crop insurance to compliance with highly erodible land conservation and wetland conservation compliance provisions. Although no producers will lose premium subsidy for the current reinsurance year, first-time compliers will need to visit a farm service agency to certify their compliance if they have not already done so. USDA intends to provide more details on the new conservation compliance requirements later this fall. Education on this requirement will be a priority for USDA in the coming months. RMA plans to release supplemental coverage option materials later this month, and information for corn, grain sorghum, rice, soybeans, spring wheat, and cotton will be made available later this summer or early fall. In addition, RMA will be able to offer SCO for spring barley beginning in 2015. Also this fall, RMA will be examining additional crop and county coverage under SCO. We understand that producers need as much information as possible regarding when they make their ARC and PLC election. Policy materials and county availability for the stacked income protection plan for producers of upland cotton will be made available in August. And RMA anticipates that stacks will be available for over 98% of cotton acreage in production. Additionally, FSA will have information on the Cotton Transition Assistance Payment Program available later this summer. In closing, I would like to thank the committee for this opportunity to update you on USDA's progress in implementing Title I and Title 11 of the 2014 farm bill. Farmers, ranchers, rural communities, and other USDA stakeholders have waited several years for this legislation, and USDA has made significant implementation progress. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Michael. The chair will remind members that they will be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in order of arrival, and I appreciate our members' understanding. I now recognize myself for five minutes. Michael, thank you for all the great work that RMA and FSA and your team has done. You laid out a few of those accomplishments, particularly with the livestock, and we are truly thankful for the hard work. But under the guise of, you know, what have you done for me lately, we'll have some questions about some of the things that are yet to be done. And so I don't want to take the edge off how appreciative we are of what you have accomplished, but there are some things that are a concern to us, and I also want to thank your FSA team writ in large. They're anxiously waiting a lot of the stuff that you're trying to kick out to them so that they can actually work with their producers, and there's a sincere joint effort in all of that. Talking about the APH, and we've had some back and forth with your staff, I need some help understanding why this is going to be so difficult, we can't get it done in 2015. We had an intern last week pull down 20 years' worth of NASS data for 54 counties in Texas on wheat, covered about 75% of the wheat crop. They did the calculations, they figured out which years could be kicked out under the APH adjustment. So if we were able to do that with the resources we had, RMA with the new resources and monies that they've got and the broader access to data that they have, can you help us understand why we can't get at least a partial rollout of the APH quicker than the 2016 crop year?
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the concern about getting the APH done as soon as we possibly can, and we very much would like to do that. If you look at everything that RMA is going to be rolling out for 2015 and the resources that it takes for the Risk Management Agency to roll out those programs for 2015, it is no small task, just on those. For, and one of the reasons why the Risk Management Agency is able to roll out this many programs for 2015, Risk Management Agency looked at the bills that had been passed by the House and Senate previous to the bill that was ultimately passed by both and signed by the president. We anticipated these programs, so we started to work on these programs long before the final bill was passed and signed into law. The APH was not in any of those previous forms of legislation, and it was a last-minute addition to the final farm bill and one that we did not anticipate having to implement. Having said that, it's not just about going back and getting 20 years of data for every single county, but it's 20 years of data for every single county, for every single crop that is grown in that county. And on top of that, we also have to work with our approved insurance providers, the 18 companies out there that are responsible for writing the crop insurance. It's no small effort to do the IT programs for all the commodities that are grown in all of the counties in the entire United States. So what I'm going to offer up, Mr. Chairman, to the committee, if you will, I will offer up a detailed written explanation of the issues that we are facing in trying to implement APH.
I appreciate that. As I mentioned in my opening statement, the APH adjustment is self-executing. The law itself says that producers shall be able to do this. Given that, what's going to happen if producers take it upon themselves to adjust their own or make their own adjustments, do their own calculations, and then work through the process there? Wouldn't it be better for the agency to do it versus each individual producer taking it upon themselves to say, hey, the rule law says I can do this, and I'm going to do it on my own? What do we tell producers?
We can't implement something that we do not have the information on. And if we do not have the information that has been verified by the agency, then it is something that is very difficult and impossible for us to implement. And on top of that, we also have to, Mr. Chairman, we actually have to go back and work with the companies. We also have to look at the actuarial soundness of these changes and what rates may change because of this legislation.
Right. I certainly understand the impact on rates, but there's no actuarial soundness to the production history itself. That's just a fact that's out there, though, right? I understand you've got something to do after you've got the average production done.
Right. After we do it, at some point in time, you're going to have to verify the actuarial soundness of these changes.
All right. Well, we have a few follow-up questions of a more legal nature that we'll submit for the record. So with that, I recognize my ranking member for five minutes, David.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our ranking member for the committee, Mr. Peterson, has come in, so I would like to now him say something.
Well, I'm going to ask a couple of questions, so if I can do it now, or, thank you, gentlemen.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, my concern is on the implementation of the dairy program. I had a discussion with the secretary last week, so I'm a little unclear about exactly what the situation is, but I'm concerned that this thing is going to not get rolled out quick enough, and we're going to have a problem getting people to understand this. Talking to dairy farmers in my area, especially the smaller ones, they have no idea that we've done anything. They have no idea that this margin insurance exists. You know, they're not used to going into the FSA office. A lot of them aren't in the program, you know. And I just think that if we, we need to, you know, the rates are in the statute, so, you know, there's no rulemaking or anything. The rates are in the statute in terms of what the insurance costs for, you know, for the different-sized producers. The, I guess the issue is determining what the base is and determining what new producers, you know, or so forth and so on. But I don't think that's going to affect, you know, the decision-making. I just think that you need to get your FSA people up to speed on this, because in talking to them, they don't know anything about this, you know. And I just think you need to get this out to the dairy farmers that this new margin insurance program exists, that these are what the rates are, that they need to stay thinking about this, because I'm just worried that we're going to get a very poor enrollment, from what I'm hearing out there. And especially because we have some of the best prices we've ever had, and people are going to think, well, what the heck, you know, I don't, you know, I don't need any insurance because I got 20-some-dollar milk. But you all, you know, everybody knows that high prices bring low prices, and, you know, it's going to be a problem. So I just think you need to get your FSA people up to speed as soon as you can. You need to get something out to the dairy farmers that this is coming, you know, and you need to do it now instead of in September, I believe. So I don't know what your timeframe is, but...
We take the education and outreach for all of these programs very seriously, and I understand your concerns. The committee that is working on the dairy program will be in Washington next week. We are going to finalize that program as quickly as we can, and as soon as we finalize it and we have the educational tools from the universities, we will do all the outreach that we possibly can to the industry, working with the industry, working with cooperative extension, working with our farm service agencies and the 2,100 offices around the United States. But Congressman, we take our responsibility for the education outreach very seriously, and we're going to do everything that we can to reach as many of those producers as we possibly can as soon as we can.
So from what I understand, you're kind of holding things up until you figure out the answers on the base and the new producers and so forth? You're wanting to have everything done before you roll this out? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, we would like to have it completed before we roll everything out and answer as many of the questions as we possibly can to eliminate any of the confusion that may exist if we roll it out piecemeal.
Well, I just don't, I don't agree that there's going to be confusion, because, you know, the decision that people are going to make is not going to be, in most cases, based on what their base is. It's going to be pretty obvious, you know, 2011, 12, or 13, it's going to be pretty obvious what's going to be the best situation. So that, very few people are going to be affected by the new producer stuff and having sold the dairy and so forth. And so you're holding up the whole situation over things that are, I don't think, central to making this decision. And my, you know, the problem I've picked up out there, people have no idea that this even exists, you know. So why couldn't the FSA office or somebody send a letter to these dairy farmers saying that there's a margin insurance program coming? You know, these are the rates that are in the statute, you know, we're going to be finalizing the base issues and so forth later on, but just so they start, they get, they understand this is coming, because I just, I'm really worried that...
Congressman, I'll take that under consideration. I will go back and look at it and see if we can do something about getting notification out to the dairy producers, just notifying them that this is coming and the timeframes. I will go back and take a look at it, Congressman.
I appreciate that, and thank you, Chairman. I yield back.
As you yield back, thank you. Recognize David Scott now for five minutes. Recognize David Scott now for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under Secretary, let's go immediately to the point I brought up concerning the treatment of the downward adjustment trend to Georgia and South Carolina peach producers. First of all, we need to correct that. It's very punitive, it's not fair, it's costing, and it's not a level playing field. Can we get your commitment to address this issue for the satisfaction of the peach farmers in Georgia and South Carolina?
I will do even better than that. We have the Administrator for the Risk Management Agency in South Carolina today, who will be leaving South Carolina and going to Georgia. We are looking at this issue as we speak, and we are taking it very seriously, and we are looking for a solution.
And what will that solution be? What will be a part of that solution? And will a part of that solution take into consideration that extraordinary freeze in March that affected Georgia and South Carolina to the tune and the losses of millions of dollars? Will that be taken into consideration as well as you attend to this issue?
It's, it would be premature for me to speculate on what the solution might be. I haven't, again, the Administrator is down there today and the rest of this week, talking with the producers and talking with the staff, so it would be premature for me to speculate at this time what the solution ultimately will be, but we do take this very seriously.
Well, would a part of that solution be to give Georgia and South Carolina the same waivers in consideration that you give the other peach growers from Maine to North Carolina?
That is one of the options we're looking at.
Good. And would you please work with my office and the people in Georgia and South Carolina to give us updates on this?
Sure. And again, when the Administrator returns to Washington, as we make progress in this, we will be more than glad to keep your office posted.
And let me just ask you, is there, why in the first place would we have these waivers for some peach farmers from Maine to North Carolina, and we didn't have it in the first place for South Carolina and Georgia? Is there something I'm missing?
And I can't answer your question. I will get you a response, but that was done before, before I came into office, but we'll get you a response.
Okay. I just want you to know, I'm very concerned about that. I'd like to work with you and follow up on that to make sure we correct that to the satisfaction. Our farmers are faced with tremendously devastating issues right now. It's almost so difficult for them to actually farm for the amount of other things that they have to deal with. Now, let me go to the other issue I raised about this Reserve Assurance Fund, reassure, Reserve Assurance Fund for peanuts. Can you tell us about that? And I do recall that we put money in there in this fund. I'd like to know, how much money did that finally come to? How will that be utilized?
Congressman, I would be perfectly honest with you. I'm not aware of any money that was put in a fund. I do know that there was a requirement for us to come up with a peanut insurance policy. It is one that we have been working on now for quite some years. I know it's a great concern for the producers in your state. We continue to work on a peanut revenue policy, and I think the requirement is for us to have one rolled out by 2015. That'll depend on a couple of different factors, whether we have a, someone do a private submission or if we have to go out and develop it through the Risk Management Agency. So it is something that we take very seriously and we are looking into.
Okay. And again, you will keep me apprised of that.
Yes, sir.
I mean, after all, my state of Georgia leads the nation in peanuts and peaches, as well as poultry and pecans.
Understood.
Watermelons and blueberries. Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
The bragging is unflattering. Mr. Knogbaugh, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman Conaway. Thanks for having this important hearing. Mr. Secretary, thank you for being here this morning. First of all, I want to start off with thanking you for the progress that you've made and the hard work that your folks are doing to implement this very important farm bill. Unfortunately, these hearings aren't generally about all the things that you're getting done, it's about the things that you didn't get done, because those are the things that we're hearing about. And so, but, you know, you and I had a conversation yesterday about the implementation of the APH, and one of the things that we were talking about was that Congress had put about $70 million in implementation for Title XI. And I think you weren't aware that they had put that much money. You thought that that was for Title I, but in fact, the Congress put $70 million in for implementation of Title XI. And additionally, Section 20 provides $9 million, which you mentioned in your testimony, and it gives the Secretary discretion to move these dollars for implementation. So, you know, I know that you've got a lot to implement, and I think one of the things that was so important about putting this implementation of the crop insurance is because for some of the commodity titles aren't really eligible, you know, for any Title I programs, and one of those is being cotton. So have, are we, is there a misunderstanding here about what the money's for and how it should be used, and if so, do we need to clarify that?
We're definitely going to need to clarify that, because I, I am not aware of $70 million for us to implement these policies or provisions for the crop insurance title. So I am at a loss, and we will have to have a follow-up conversation.
Please do, because I think one of the reasons that we recognized we were giving you a big task in a very short period of time, and so it's my understanding that this money was put into the farm bill, and if it's not, then I stand corrected, but if it is and you, and you didn't know about it, then we need to, we need to clarify that as quickly as...
We certainly do, and we will, we will look to clarify that.
And I think along those same lines, because what you, what you said was the APH issue wasn't necessarily about the money, but just about, about the timeline, and I guess the importance about if there is a way here to put additional resources to work to speed up that timeline. I think something that Chairman Conaway mentioned that sparked a question on my part is if we do have these areas where that production history is critical to next year, is there an opportunity for, say, a partial implementation earlier for some of those areas, for example, Texas, Oklahoma, and other states that have been involved in a serious drought, so that they could go ahead and benefit from, you know, making that election on the production history?
I can't give you an answer to that right now, because we would have to, we would have to go back and take a look within the agency about everything that would be impacted by making that decision. We would also have to go back and talk to the 18 approved insurance providers about the impacts for writing the policy, so there would be a lot of questions that we would have to answer if we were able to, before I could give you an answer on whether or not we would be able to do a partial implementation.
Well, I think, I think the reason that's important is because, as I said, you know, for commodities like cotton, basically the crop insurance program is their safety net, and so delaying the implementation of that becomes a critical issue of them. I want to go back to something else that we had a conversation about, and I think what you and I agreed was that we just got lawyers with different opinions, but that's on the enterprise units. And, you know, the statute says, or the law, the bill said, the corporation shall make available separate enterprise units for irrigated and non-irrigated acreage. And I think the current interpretation that your agency has is that if you elect one, you have to elect enterprise for the other. I do not think that was the original intent. We may, you know, try to get the lawyers to take another look at that, but what I would like to hear from you is if, in fact, we have unintended consequences there that, which caused that interpretation. I'd love to hear that you would help support some efforts to, you know, clarify that.
Well, most definitely, we'll look at, we'll look at getting some additional clarification on the issue, but I do want to point out that, that, that under that program previously, under enterprise units, if you had one farm in a county or five farms, you had to enroll every farm in the enterprise units. Every farm within that county that you were tilling had to be part of that enterprise unit. So I think if you look at how the program has been previously run, and then the legislation now to give you the ability to separate irrigated and non-irrigated, I think that is still keeping with how the original law was intended. And again, I'm not an attorney, but I think that was part of what, what we were looking at when that decision was made.
Well, and I think one of the things that we tried to do in this farm bill is expand the choices and the opportunities, and so what we did previously, particularly with the fact that we're shifting the safety net to more of a crop insurance oriented, but anyway, I'd love to...
And as I, as I pointed out, there is the provision where you can, if you don't want to go with enterprise units, you can get separate insurance for irrigated and non-irrigated, which has been an issue for many of our producers around the United States for a long time. So, you know, there, that was a really good addition to the farm bill that's going to help a lot of our producers that have both irrigated and non-irrigated.
Chairman, Mr. Veela for five minutes.
Yeah, I just have the same concerns that my Texas colleagues do in terms of the implementation, the APH adjustments, but I think you've kind of responded, you're going to come up with a detailed response and explanation on that. When can we expect that?
We'll have that to the committee next week.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Veela. Mr. Crawford for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A quick question on the Cotton Transition Program. Mr. Secretary, is U.S.A. still on track to conduct a sign-up for Cotton Transition Program in August and issue payments in October?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Let me, let me ask you about peanuts. I certainly appreciate the efforts to ensure that peanut revenue coverage is in place for 2015 crop year. You have an update on that, how we're progressing there?
Again, we have been working on that program now for quite some time. We will continue to look at it and monitor and review any submissions that come before the board. It would be, you know, my wish that we could have something by 2015, but again, whatever is submitted has to have the approval of the FCIC board before we can implement it. So if there is approval by the board for a program this year, we could implement it for the 15 crop year. Again, as I pointed out, if there's not a private submission that, that the board could, that the board could approve, then we would be tasked to go out and do a contract or develop one on our own in-house, and if that were the case, then the earliest that we would be able to do one would be 2016.
Okay. One of the challenges in, particularly in my district with rice producers is crop insurance, trying to find a crop insurance product that works, there's an authorization for RMA to develop a margin product. It may be a little early, but can you comment on what the progress has been on that?
It's, it's a bit early to, and premature to comment on, you know, anything that we have done so far with that. We do know that it has been an issue for the rice producers. Again, this is something that the rice producers have brought to our attention for several years, and it, and I agree with their point, they're growing a crop in water, so it's not, they're not looking at crop failure, they're looking at revenue.
Right.
So it does, it does create a little bit different scenario for us to get a product for the rice producers out there that they're going to be satisfied with, again, that the companies can run, that's going to be actuarially sound.
Well, and you mentioned actuarially sound, and we're only talking about probably this year, 3 million acres at, at the most.
Yeah.
By comparison, that makes it difficult for an actuary base to exist. Is that a fair statement?
I, yeah, I think you understand some of the problems that we face in developing a product.
Okay. Well, I just want to kind of keep, keep my eyes on that one, for obvious reasons. My district is probably the biggest rice-producing district in the country, about half of the rice crop is produced there. Let me switch gears, supplemental coverage option. One of the inequities that's resulting from the delay in SCO implementation is that farmers must elect sometime later this year or early next year between PLC and SCO versus ARC. For some farmers, SCO won't be available yet, so you can see where the problem exists there. It means that some farmers have got to make a choice on whether or not supplemental coverage will be available. Can you, can you comment on, is it, is it, is it safe for them to make that election for the 2015 crop year? Are we going to have that in place?
You know, I, this is one of the hopes, that the decision tools will be able to provide the information for them. They'll be able to plug in the yields, the prices for the different programs, and see the overall impacts and make a decision for when SCO actually becomes available to them. Right now, SCO will be available in the 15 crop year to 90% of the corn farmers in the United States, 90% of the soybean farmers in the United States, 95% of the cotton producers in the United States, 80% of the wheat, and 70% of the rice producers. That's for the 15-year. And we'll continue to take a look at that and add to that in the coming year and for the 16 crop year. So the majority of producers will have SCO available to them in the 15 crop year.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Yield back. Chairman yields back. Mr. Maloney for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Undersecretary Skous. The farm bill contains a number of provisions that help small diversified producers, like the ones I represent in the Hudson Valley of New York. And a number of us, including my colleague Chris Gibson, who represents the same region of New York, a number of us worked on a number of provisions to help those, those types of farmers. In particular, I'm interested in the, in the whole farm revenue insurance program. The Secretary recently announced he thought those programs would be available for the 2015 crop year. I was just hoping you could expand on that and give us a little update on, on that timeframe and whether you're comfortable with that.
The, the whole farm revenue will be available in a pilot in 2015 for the areas where we had AGAR and AGR Light, and so it'll be available to, to those, those producers where we had those programs the last few years in a pilot, and then it will be expanded in 2016.
Well, and you anticipated my next question, which is, which is how will the program, if you can tell us, differ from those existing AGR and AGR Light programs?
I would have to provide that to you in writing what the differences are. There are some differences between how the programs are going to be functioning, but we'll, we'll provide you that, those differences in writing.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. And, and as you know, there's, there's also a provision in the bill called the Crop Act, which, which is dear to my heart and that I worked on, and that would, would help facilitate the development of new insurance, particularly for these smaller specialty crop and diversified family farms that I mentioned. And one aspect of that is to allow the RMA to develop these plans in-house. Is there work being done on that that you can give us an update on?
We greatly appreciate your efforts and the efforts of other members of the committee in getting that language put in there to allow RMA to develop some of these. As you know, there are products out there that some of the larger companies may not want to develop because of the time or the money that it would take and what little return there may be on that investment, and this gives RMA an opportunity to look at some of those products. There's been a demand for crop insurance for additional products now for quite some time, so I think this will allow us an opportunity to develop some of those products in-house and help many of those smaller producers that aren't, aren't able to get coverage today. So it's one of the things that we're going to look at as the demand comes in for new products, we'll take a look at developing those.
Is there any specific work being done now?
Not at this moment, but I'm, again, we continue to look at the demand, and as the demand for products comes in, then we'll look at developing some of these products in-house.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate your attention to that, because it's, it's really very important for the types of farms that we have in the Hudson Valley in New York. So I'm very glad to hear that you're, that you're eager to utilize those provisions.
We greatly appreciate that.
Finally, let me just ask you, sir, a question about fraud in the crop insurance program. You know, we, we had quite a debate in this committee around, around nutrition assistance and around possible fraud in the SNAP program. There's been some attention paid recently to... There's been some attention paid recently to to instances of fraud in the crop insurance program. I'd like to give you an opportunity to to speak about that, since there are considerable amounts involved in these programs. Is this a concern? What's being done on it? And can you give us give us an update on that?
Well, let me start out by by thanking the members for the money that was added to the Title XI to help us look at some of the issues that we have faced. That funding is greatly appreciated. We are looking at, we do data mining to go back and look at the producers, look at the acreage, look at the yields, look at the the income. We also go out and do field spot checks. The Risk Management Agency works with the Farm Service Agency to go out and do those checks to verify production or non-production. We're going to be looking at using some of that funding to hire additional STF, again, to help us look at different policies and additional data mining so that we can have any abuse of the system cut to a bare minimum. So again, we greatly appreciate the funding that was put in in the farm bill for for the use for for us to look at those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I yield back. Joe, Mr. Neil's back. Thank you, Ms. Harster for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to start off and thank you for the good work that you and the USDA has done to implement the livestock disaster programs in such a timely fashion. I can tell you from my constituents in Missouri that the money is going out and is very much appreciated. Obviously, they were devastated with those droughts a couple of years ago, so very much appreciate that. We do have one concern, though, as it relates to the forage programs and the dairy farmers in our area. As you know, that grazing dairies intensively manage their operations in this management practice allows them to meet the greater forage need of the dairy cows in their program. However, the current formulas used by the USDA uses beef cow forage values on a per-unit basis that are significantly less than the needs of a dairy cow. And my office and others have raised this issue with the USDA, and I would like to know if the USDA plans to explore this inequity to address the concerns of these operations.
Thank you, and I visited your state in 2012 on several occasions, and I personally saw the the effects of the drought and the impact that it had on your producers. In fact, on April 16th, I went back to your state and I visited a dairy operation that we were going to be able to to give LFP funding to. So and and they they were very appreciative, but we it is something that we take seriously. This is not the first time the issue has been brought up. There is a difference between dairy operations and and beef operations and and the pasture, the amount of forage that it does take. It is an issue, and it is something that we're looking into. I don't know that we're going to be able to address the problem, but it is something that we look at, and and I would ask that the producers, the dairy producers that that feel that they have been adversely affected, work with Cooperative Extension, get better information, and deliver that information to our Farm Service Agency offices so that we'll have a better understanding of exactly what the issue is.
Okay. Well, thank you for looking in that, and we'll certainly pass that on as well. On another topic, you know, many of the producers have been chomping a bit to learn more about the sign up for the safety net programs. I understand they may start this fall. The farm bill provided $3 million for decision-making tools, and USDA decided to split that money between two separate consortiums of universities, and I want to thank you again that University of Missouri is part of that. But I was curious, can you provide a little more insight into the reason USDA decided to create two separate tools as opposed to focus the resource just on a single tool? There's, yeah.
We discussed that quite a bit about the the funding. Of course, we went out, it was an open process. You know, it was open to any university to apply for the funding. When we look at the the proposals that we got back, and you looked at the proposal from Illinois and and A&amp;M, these were two very, very good proposals. One went a little bit further than the other when it came to the the dairy and to the NAP buy-up. And we felt that the the other proposal was as well a solid proposal for ARC and PLC. And then if you look at the the comfort level for the producers and and what what they're going to be comfortable, which tool they would be comfortable using, to us, it made a lot of sense to to split the funding and allow the the one group to do ARC, PLC, dairy, and the NAP buy-up, and then the other group to do ARC and PLC. We just thought it was really good to to have two different tools out there for our producers to take a look at.
I'm sorry, I just I wanted to clarify. Did you say that both of them, though, will be doing PLC and ARC?
Both both groups will have PLC and ARC.
Now, will that be divided up by county? So if a farmer in one county uses one tool and then somebody or is it?
In theory, both tools should work the same way anywhere.
Okay. Just hope it doesn't cause confusion like medical records, like.
I understood, but.
Electronic medical records.
One of the things that that one of the requirements is that before these tools are released, they will come back to USDA and they will be tested for accuracy.
Okay, very good. We have more questions, time's up. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe, Mr. Neil's back. Rodney Davis for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you again, Mr. Skuse, for being here. I appreciated our conversation before the hearing began. And a lot of the questions that I had planned to ask have already been asked. That's the detriment of being a freshman and being a little little later in the dais. But I do want to thank you for what you guys are doing, implementing many of the provisions in the farm bill. As a freshman legislator and as a member of the Conference Committee on the Farm Bill, it's been a great learning experience for me, and it's it's also something that I look forward to working with your agency on to to further our implementation goals. I had one question, though, and it's in regards to the standard reinsurance agreement. And the 2008 farm bill authorizes the SRA to be renegotiated every five years, and the last SRA was negotiated in 2010 and implemented in 2011. Are there any plans within your department to renegotiate the SRA next year?
Not at this time.
All right. Do you have any plans to renegotiate the SRA down the road?
I can't make that determination today. I, you know, I don't know what's going to come down the road, but we have no intentions of renegotiating the SRA next year.
Okay. Well, I look forward to your written responses to some of the questions that were asked earlier, and I look forward to working with you implementing some of the new provisions, especially in relation to crop insurance, which is crucial to my district in central Illinois. And thank you for your visits, and I yield back the rest of my time.
Joe, Mr. Neil's back. Chris Scott, you want to give it a go?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll do my best to get this out. I've been a little under the weather lately, but I just share my colleague from Georgia's concerns about the peaches and the peanuts, and certainly appreciate seeing your response to that, and I'll submit my other questions in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll back. Joe, Mr. Neil's back. Mr. Lamoffa for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Skuse, for appearing here today. I know you have as many different members as there is here, as there are different aspects of the programs you have to administer and make work, so I know it's not easy. As you know, in California, we're facing huge drought problems with many constituents affected different ways. At least over one-third of the state is suffering under some of the worst of the drought conditions, and it seems to be getting worse. Optimism for the El Ninos coming off of filling up the reservoirs next year, so I don't know, we're looking pretty tough. Mr. Crawford talked pretty well about some of the rice issues earlier that affect a lot of my constituents. I'm a rice grower myself, but also we have great concerns with our livestock growers as well, with the disaster funding that's been very critical for them. And again, they're concerned that there's been a backlog ever since the passage of the farm bill, that the offices aren't able to keep up with that. And so I know you have staffing issues there, and there's kind of a which one do you work on the most of the different different aspects you have to try and catch up to in the short amount of time. In two of my 11 counties, for example, I represent cattle outnumber the people, so you can understand how big of a deal this is for those payments to be made for these ranchers up there. And some are still waiting on 2013 payments, and that the that 2014 payments are going to be behind. So can you just speak briefly about how we can assure them that we're going to catch up to the backlog as as you're balancing everything there that?
Sure. I visited your state earlier this year. I went to one cattle operation, and unfortunately, the day that I was there, the gentleman was dividing his herd into two, and half the herd was going to be sold that day because of the the lack of pasture. I visited another sheep operation where they could no longer irrigate out of the river because of the salt line, and the cost for drilling a well was going to be prohibitive. So I can appreciate what your what your constituents are going through. What we're doing, we've hired temporary staff in offices where we know that we need additional staffing levels. On top of that, we have asked the SEDs in each state to look at their staffing levels, where they currently are, and if they're in non-livestock production areas, to see about a temporary shift of those workers into areas where we have the the livestock production taking place. So we're looking at different ways to manage to better manage the resources that we have available so that we can get through the the sign up.
You squeeze the balloon there, then it then it starts to fall short on the PLC program, for example.
Well, that's why we want to get that's why we want to do the shift now. That's why we want to get as many resources in place today as we can, because we recognize the fact that we're going to have ARC and PLC sign up, and we'll be hiring additional temporary staff to help us with the the sign up for ARC and PLC, and that work later this year. So we're trying to.
Keep people on time for 2015?
Pardon?
That'll still keep people on time for 2015?
Yes.
And then some of the 2014, we're wondering about that. Is that is that going to catch up here pretty soon for those that are still looking at in the 2014 fiscal year as well?
And I and I appreciate, you know, your concern, but we're asked at the Farm Service Agency to do three years, basically, worth of work in just a very short time period. The '08 farm bill, these disaster programs expired before the '08 farm bill did, so they weren't in existence in '12. In '13, these programs, when the farm bill was extended, these programs were included in that extension but were not funded. And now, if you look at the drought in California as well as the Southwest, we're now asking our our office staff to do three years' worth of work in a very short period of time. And in spite of that, I think they're doing a very, very good job. I, you know, I'll brag on my staff, I think I've got the best workforce in all of federal government in those county offices. So we're looking at at managing our resources as best we can to get as much of that backlog taken up as quickly as we can.
All right, so maybe you can comment more. My time is expired, and what is it we need to provide either in legislation or or funding efficiently to help catch you up even more so, so we don't face 2015 problems? Thank you.
Joe, Mr. Neil's expired. Mr. McAllister for five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Secretary. I try to be, you know, me being from Louisiana, being under the weather, it's probably going to be really tough to understand me, but I'll try I'll try to be as clear as possible. Just a couple of quick questions. You know, one, we know farmers know how to farm, and when we let them farm, they do their job. But when it comes to implementation of these crop insurances, some of the concerns I have is there's a couple of very important issues that were included in the farm bill. One provision just tells the FSA to be sure to share important information with the producer's crop insurance agent, so the agent has all the information they need to write the policy and not have it canceled because of some error. The provision is really aimed to avoid errors in the first place. The second provision allows agents to correct honest errors that have in the past led to the nullification of a policy, which is pretty harsh medicine to the farmer. We certainly hope and expect the department to implement these provisions in a way that in fact prevent errors from ever occurring in the first place, but if they do occur, as they will, to allow the errors to be corrected without yanking coverage from a producer. How's this implementation coming on these fronts?
Those are some of the things that we are looking at and taking very seriously. As you pointed out, we don't want any of our our producers to be put at a disadvantage because there may not be proper information. One of the ways that we hope to accomplish this is there was funding in the farm bill for the acreage crop reporting streamlining initiative. And what this does is this will allow us to share information between the Farm Service Agency, Risk Management Agency, and vice versa, so that we don't have the the two different crop reports, so we don't have a risk of of misinformation unintentionally being given to one or the other. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. We also have the system SIMs, SKIMS, where we can share information between the Farm Service Agency and the Risk Management Agency. So we take that very seriously, and we want to do everything that we can to make sure that our producers have the very best information as well as their agents.
I appreciate that. And the second is I appreciate all your efforts to ensure the stacks is made available to all the cotton producers in in all the counties and parishes where in Louisiana where we have the parishes in time for the 2015 crop year. But I've heard that you expect the stacks to be made available to about 98% of cotton acreage by 2015 crop year. Can you tell us what cotton-producing counties or parishes you are having difficulty with, and when you can expect those difficulties to be resolved so that we have 100% availability?
Those maps will be released, I believe, next month, so we'll be able to see where these these programs are going to be where they're they're going to be available. But again, it's 98% of the production will be available to get that product, so but we're going to release the maps next month.
Okay. Well, I just I appreciate all the hard work. We know this has been a monumental task, and and these are one of the this is one of the agencies that does does work well sometimes. So anything we can do, we appreciate the hard work, and I yield back my time, Chairman.
Thank you, and I didn't have any trouble understanding you because Commissioner Strain is a good friend of mine.
There you go. Joe, Mr. Neil's back. Chrissy, five minutes.
Yes, thank you for being here. I'm from South Dakota, so we are home of the disaster of winter storm Atlas that hit us last October. And so I want to really tell you how much I appreciate the fact that when we had sign up for the livestock indemnity program on April 15th, my producers came back telling me that within six to seven days, they had checks in their hands. So that was real help that was desperately needed, especially since we'd been hit with the drought of 2012 as well. And so a lot of these guys took two hits right in a row, and that was absolutely devastating for South Dakota. So that gave them a little hope that they'd be able to stay on their ranchers and maybe someday see cattle back in their pastures. So thank you for that hard work, and making it a priority, which we had asked, and you really followed through and did that. I do have some concerns about the livestock forage program, because I understand that there's some backlog that's going on and that you are moving people around trying to deal with the backlog that's happening across the country in some areas. Can you speak to that?
Yes.
And also, when you speak to it, give us an update on where we are as far as dollars out the door on the indemnity program and on the forage program on both of those.
I don't have that particular breakdown, but if you look at the combination of the both, we're looking at $1.2 billion in in money out the door. The last week of June, for an example, we had just over 17,000 applications done that week, so we are still receiving a tremendous amount of applications. We're looking at not only hiring temporary staff and reallocating resources within the state, but we've also put together jump teams from other states that don't have livestock to go into those states where we do have a backlog and try to deal with that backlog and get it taken care of as as quickly as possible. So we've used a combination of things, temporary staff, reallocation of resources in-state, and jump teams from other states to help us to help us get through this.
Do you have an end date on when, like an occurrence like Winter Storm Atlas, that we had an end date where applications will no longer be accepted?
I believe, let me get that to you. I believe it's it's later on this year.
Okay, and then we have some.
January, like.
2015?
Really good, January of 2015.
Good staff back there.
I didn't want to give you a wrong date.
Yeah, that's great.
But it's January, and I I, you know, I've visited your state. I was there after the blizzard. I was there in 2012, and I was also there for the first day of sign up on April 15th.
I appreciate that. Also, I've heard some instances where extreme heat losses are not covered. Again, we have that in South Dakota, unfortunately, while we're a land of extremes, but once in a while, we'll lose some cattle due to extreme heat and feedlots especially. Can you speak to why that would happen, that there would be a denial based in that in that program? that program?
I will have to get back to you on what is and is not covered, because there are some things that are covered under LIP, and then there are other things that are covered or may be covered under the Emergency Livestock Assistance Program.
Okay. I have another question about conservation compliance, because I'm concerned about how that, the rules are being written and how they will be implemented, but the interim rule suggests that all farmers need to sign up for all acres and show that they are in compliance, but yet the law is written such that they will only have to be in compliance on tillable acres that they till each year. So can you speak to why that appears to be being implemented a little bit differently, how the law states? That the law states that they'll have to be required annually on tillable acres to be in compliance, rather than a producer having to come in and sign up and say that they're--
Because the conservation is now tied to crop insurance, so it is directly tied to the subsidy for the land that you are farming.
But it's only going to be tied to tillable acres?
I, I don't, you have to have, you will have to have a conservation plan for your farm in effect when you sign up, give the 1026 form, which those do, that do not currently have a 1026 form filed with the FSA office, will have to do so by the 1st of June next year.
Okay. So then, if a producer is found to be out of compliance in 2015, my understanding is that they could not receive the subsidy in 2016 and could not be reinstated till 2017, which seems as though, even if it is a good faith effort, an honest mistake, not someone who knowingly violated the conservation practice laws, is that true?
Yes. If you're not, if you're not in compliance, you cannot receive the subsidy.
So even if a producer in 2016 went back in good faith and fixed that conservation practice, they're still going to be ineligible for 2016?
They're going to be ineligible, they will be ineligible for 2016.
That is a heavy penalty for producers, considering the amount of subsidy on crop insurance policies, to not be reinstated till 2017.
Well, remember, we're asking them to sign up, that they will be in compliance on June 15th, and then they are given a period of time to come into compliance.
How long is that period of time?
They will have until the next, now, yeah, and I can't answer that right now, because that's going to be in the rule when it's ultimately--
Well, if they're, if they are, and that's what I would like the rule to reflect, is that if they are found to be in violation and they can show that it's a good faith mistake, that they didn't knowingly violate their conservation practice, if there's a period of time for them to fix that and come back and, and repair what was done without losing the subsidy, that's how I would prefer to see it written, because I know producers out there many times are busy, they've got a lot of acres they're covering. They may knowingly make a change, or unknowingly make a change, and to make it whole before they lose that subsidy would be, I think, the right thing to do.
Again, they are having, they have the ability to come into compliance before the '16 crop year.
Yeah, let me know what that timeframe is, how much time they have.
They have the ability to come into compliance, that's the way the law is written, before the 2000s crop year, so that they will not lose that subsidy.
Okay. Yep.
Your time has expired. Mr. Gibson, New York, five minutes.
Well, thanks, Mr. Chairman, and I thank you and the ranking member for your leadership and pulling this together today. And Mr. Undersecretary, thank you. This has been an informative hearing and I appreciate your leadership and the work of the great department. I just have a few points. I just want to follow up on a few things. The first thing with regard to what Mr. Peterson was talking about earlier, I share the concern that we get the widest dissemination about the margin insurance program. I'm doing my part on that, doing a series of events to get the word out and some of my correspondents. I'm encouraged to hear you're considering a letter that would go out to dairy farmers. And should you decide to do that, I would love to get a copy of it, maybe we can get it to the Cornell Cooperative Extension and the Farm Bureau, and, you know, I can use it going forward in radio engagements and the like. But I think that that's something we can do together, continue to get the word out on that. Likewise, on risk management, and I appreciated your colloquy with my colleague, Mr. Maloney, and that, you know, part of the intent of, when we drew up some of the language, was to bring in closer the department with our farmers, to collaborate, to take their input as you work together with the RMA to come up with new products. And I'm, I'm just curious, have you, have you come forward with any processes that would get the input of farmers for, for these new products?
Well, the way that this, this works, I travel a great deal around the country to meet with different producers, as does the administrator. As I pointed out earlier, Administrator Willis is in South Carolina and Georgia this week. And we get feedback from producers on what products they would like to see us develop. Some of the products that have been developed in the, in the past have come from the agricultural community, because that's what they've asked us for. We've been asked, you know, for a period of years for a peanut program and, and for rice as well. And these are some of the things that we've taken very seriously and looked at. So a lot of times, it's, it comes from our visits out in the countryside, talking with the producers and what they would like to see. A, a, a good example would be several years ago, sweet potatoes in Louisiana. The producers came, there was an opportunity there to have a facility built, but the farmers weren't willing to grow the sweet potatoes unless there was a revenue product or a crop insurance product out there for them. So we worked with them and developed that and helped build an entire industry down there. So that's a, that's a good example of how the system works, that when they come to us with, with, with their concerns or with a product that they would like to have developed, we take it seriously and take a look at it in-house and then see if there's a private submitter that is interested.
Well, thank you. And on behalf of my colleague, we'd invite you to the Hudson River Valley. You've had the secretary before as well, so our staff will be reaching out. Love to have an event where you get to hear firsthand far specialty crop growers as you pull together these products. So we'll be reaching out to your staff on that. And thank you for your willingness to move all about the country on this, very important. Lastly, similarly, the Young Farmers Program, Sergeant Major Walls and I worked together on that, and I have one of the leaders in the Young Farmers Coalition right in our district, Lindsey Shute. And I'm curious how, you know, the expansion we put in there for this Farm Bill, how that's, how that's coming along, and would likewise offer that if I can be of assistance linking you up with some of the leadership in the Young Farmers Coalition as you roll out implementation, I'd be honored to do it.
Those benefits for the young and beginning farmer programs will start in 2015. I think those were really outstanding provisions. As you know, the, the average age of the American farmer continues to get older. I finally surpassed it, but it does continue to increase in age. We need to do everything that we can to get that next generation involved in farming. The department has worked, it's something that's near and dear to Secretary Vilsack and Deputy Secretary Hardin's heart. They've worked very, very hard on, on some of these programs, and so we take it quite seriously, and we think that these were great additions to the Farm Bill to help those young producers get started in, in farming. So I think with the, not just the provisions that pertain to them in the Farm Bill, but the provisions in general in the Farm Bill, that, that's, that's, the safety net that they so desperately need, I think that's a help. And then if you look at the current prices for livestock and some of the grains, I think good prices help entice the, the next generation. So I think a combination of things, we're looking better.
Thanks, Mr. Undersecretary, and look forward to working with you and that you're back.
Your time has expired. Mr. Rogers for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a comment. As you know, this, this Farm Bill was very difficult to get through to Congress. It's, it gets increasingly difficult to each cycle. It's very complex politically, and I recognize for you, it's going to be a very complex safety net to implement. But I would remind you that there's a whole universe of producers out there that are excited but also anxious about how you're going to choose to implement it. One of the evidences of that came with Kristi Noem's question about this time period. So I would urge you that as you rock along on this, that you stay in touch with this committee about congressional intent. If you do get to an implementation component that you have questions about, I can assure you that I'll meet with you at any time, and I'm sure the other members of this committee would explain why a provision was, was inserted. Because I can tell you, it wasn't easy for us to explain why we put an extra $100 million in for implementation. So be, be good with it. And be sure and stay in touch with us, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Yields back. We've got time for a second round, and I think Doug's got one. I've got a couple of real quick nits and nats. Michael, appreciate you being here today again. Thank you. Given that we've blended, begun to blend Title I and crop insurance, and the decision-making tools that have been referenced that are about to be unleashed and that your, your FSA folks are excited about, and so is the producers, can you give us the assurance that RMA and FSA are working together to make sure those decision tools are appropriate with that blend between the two programs, since you've got one that does PLC and the other one does--
I can, I can assure you that they are working closely together. Both of those, the Farm Service Agency and Risk Management Agency, they both are under me, and if I thought for one minute that they weren't working together in getting this done, they, they would, they would know how I feel about it real quick. Let's put it that way.
Good to hear that. Thank you. And then, following up on the conservation and, and crop insurance, if a producer's in compliance today, as we understand compliance, will they be in compliance for, you know, going forward? I mean, are you going to be moving the goalpost on them?
No, no, we're not going to move the goalpost. If they're in compliance today, they're in compliance for, for next, for the next crop, unless, unless they do some--
Right, right, right. Subject to some change. If they don't do anything--
Yes, subject to some change, but if there's no change to their operation--
But if they're in compliance and they don't do anything to change to get out of compliance--
No.
They're good to go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Scott.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Thank you, Undersecretary. Let me ask you, because I think there are two safety net issues, risk areas to the future farming and threats. One, we touched upon it, that is, you touched on it a little bit earlier, and that is the age of the average farmer. It's now right at 60 years of age. Each year, it continues to escalate. And I'm wondering if the, if the department, Agriculture Department, is really looking at this in a way in which, to truly address this issue, and I know the waiving of $300 for the administrative fee, I mean, that's sort of like a little, not even a drop in the bucket, and I know you are doing some other things, but why not take a look at the Farm Bill and be creative, have you all, in looking at how we can really put some incentives in here to really, truly help beginning farmers? We have land-grant universities, and, and most of which are in Farm Belt states. Florida, you have University of Florida, and you have Florida A&amp;M University. Alabama, you have University of Alabama, Alabama A&amp;M. Georgia, you have University of Georgia, you have Four Valley State. 1890s, 1860s institutions. We put millions of dollars in the Farm Bill for these, but we do not allow any of that money to be used for scholarships for those who would study agriculture, incentives for loan forgiveness for those students who would go into agriculture. And I think that would be a very, very important step that we could take forward. Would the Agriculture Department be interested in taking a look at this? And all it would require is some language change in the Farm Bill, or would they simply say, in addition to research, in addition to the other things that we put in there for these, that some of this money could be used to give kids scholarships to go into agriculture and farming, or pay their loans?
The department continually looks at ways to, to get new people involved in agriculture, whether it be a, a young producer or someone that's coming out of another occupation or our veterans. As I pointed out earlier, this is something that the secretary and the deputy both take very, very seriously and push very, very hard for us to look at in the department. We're open, we're open, Congressman, to, to any suggestions.
Great.
If you look at our microloan program and the success of that program that the department created, and the Farm Bill increased the funding for that microloan program, you know, that's helped a lot of people get involved in agriculture, but we're, we're open to suggestions and any help that, that this body can give us.
Well, that, that's one we're percolating on, and we'll be working with you on that. Another is that some of the groups outside of Congress, like Farm Credit, for example, and Ag South, we call it down in our part of the country, have an excellent program that they're moving with, with getting beginning farming. And I was wondering if you all at the Agriculture Department were familiar with what Farm Credit was doing and how you might be able to work with them.
And I, I think if you look at our loan program at the department, there's a, a very high percentage of our loans that are targeted for young, beginning, and socially disadvantaged producers out there. But, but again, we're, we're open to suggestions, any way that we can get that, that next generation or someone new involved, we're, we're looking for suggestions.
Yeah, I would encourage you to look at the Farm Credit. Now, the other area, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, that we really have to seriously address, and that is workers for these farms and for our producers. I hear it all the time, they can't find workers to pick the blueberries, they're on the ground. They can't find workers to get the peach crop, pecans, so forth. Has the department taken a strategy of being able to sort of, in the minds, to be able to separate this issue and focus on the dire consequences that face this country and the future agriculture, and getting food into Publix and into Kroger for our American people if we don't have workers, if we don't address this? I mean, there's a crying cry out there from wherever we hear throughout the country from our farmers, we need to address this problem, if it's guesswork or whatever it is. And I was wondering if the Agriculture Department is developing a strategy in which they could deal with this in a way, away from this other motion, deal with it as a basic labor and economic issue facing the future farmer?
The, the labor issue is, as you pointed out, of great concern almost in every state. And I think the secretary, on numerous occasions, as have I, when we've had the opportunity, have said that we desperately need, for the sake of agriculture, meaningful immigration reform. Agriculture needs a workforce, and a workforce that we know will be there, one that we can depend on. I personally have visited farms that had crops rot because we could not get a workforce to harvest those crops. If you look at our, our processing plants, if you look at our dairy operations, if you look at our fruit and vegetable operations, all of these are very dependent on a workforce. So we have spoken repeatedly on the need for meaningful reforms so that the agricultural community will, in fact, have that workforce available to them.
Thank you, Mr. Undersecretary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your time is up. Mr. Lamoff for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to move quickly here, there's a lot to cover. On, we were talking earlier about the moving around of resources and personnel within USDA to address backlog. On the Livestock Forage Program backlog portion, you know, again, in California, you face drought, some, some areas having trouble getting grazing permits, as they had been in the past with sagehand going on, even wild horses. And so, especially Northeast California, you face some really acute problems with grazing there. So can, can you address this? Have you had the opportunity to push the resources up into that portion of the state with the acute problem that is there?
I'm not aware of, of where we have moved our resources in the state of California, but we can get the information, I can get in, in touch with our state executive director, and we can provide you with that information on, on what we have done and what the issues are in that part of the state.
All right. I appreciate being able to work with you on that. On the, with, with the Act in 2014, the Agricultural Act, we have more important key roles for the FSA and RMA that are going to be taken on. And so in implementing the new law-- the FSA and RMA that are going to be taking on, and so in implementing the new law, we're wondering, are they going to be able to speak the same language, because you're going to have growers that are going to have types of crops that are in the category of each of those organizations, and so are they going to be able to coordinate and work well together? Do you see any roadblocks or any hurdles in that?
Congressman, I don't see any issues with us working together through the Farm Service Agency and Risk Management Agency, we, both organizations know that we're there for the same purpose, and that's to serve our producers to the very best of our ability, so we will continue to work for ways to work together. I think right now, those agencies, along with NRCS, I think everyone right now is working together more closely than we have at any other time. I know Chief Weller has been great for us to work with at NRCS, we understand the importance of all of us getting together, especially because of this farm bill and-
Being able to share data and things like that shouldn't be-
Yeah, and we understand the importance of working together, sharing the data, sharing the information, and trying to get things done for our producers.
Good, thank you. Finally, on specialty crops here, we have, you know, California, Mr. Gibson was talking about how important they are up in his state, and it's really huge in California, as you know, that changes involved in the whole farm insurance program, and that overlaid on top of the catastrophic coverage, we're understanding the requirements there might be that they're going to have to have duplicate coverage for the same proportion of the crop, the amount of crop, and so that overlap would actually, I don't think that would really be the intended consequence, but it would make it very, very difficult for specialty crop growers to be able to be in both and participate in both, because it's not going to pencil out for them. So we don't think that was the intention in the farm bill, but we're getting feedback that that might be the direction USDA is trying to take this, what can you say on that?
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, because the overlap, I think, just blows up the program for the ability the farmers to be in, the specialty crop growers to be in the catastrophic program as well as overlapping with the other aspect of it too. So anyway, I appreciate the time, Ms. Chairman, thank you, and thank you for appearing with us today.
Thank you.
Chairman Yields Back, Ms. Bush toes for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Skews, thank you for your work on behalf of the American farmer, and especially as it pertains to crop insurance, when I go around and talk to our farmers, it's the issue I hear more about than anything, so thank you for your hard work on that. And as you know, there's many parts of the country where farmers and many of us have to worry about either too much water or not enough, and when you have a district like mine where your entire western border is the Mississippi River, and then you've got the Illinois running through, the Illinois River running through the southern part, it's, we've had a lot of water and we've had a lot of rain lately, as you may know. What I'm wondering about is, producers are dealing with the crop insurance prevented planting rules, and can you walk me through how this policy works for crop insurance?
Sure, I can give you the basics, prevented planting, if a producer does not plant the crop and does not harvest, then they will get 60% of their premium.
Okay.
If in fact, they end up planting a second crop later on in the year, they will receive 35% of the premium. Their yield, that will not be held against them, because they did, in the first scenario, if they didn't plant it and didn't harvest it, the zero yield will not be held against them, that's the basic.
Okay, so how is prevented planting treated for actual production history?
The zero will not count.
Okay, okay, all right, good, that's all I need. Thank you, sir.
Your lady yields back?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Your lady yields back. Before we adjourn, I'd like to invite the ranking member, Mr. Scott, for any closing remarks he has. David?
Thanks, Ms. Chairman, and thank you, Ms. Secretary, you've given an excellent presentation, very informative, very straightforward. As you have noted, we have a number of challenges, and we really, really appreciate you looking very, very closely at the Georgia, South Carolina situation regarding peaches and the adjustable downward trend methodology, they hope you will correct that, and we look forward to working with you with my office on that particular issue, as well as moving forward on the peanut issue as well. Thank you very much for being with us.
Chairman Yields Back, Michael, I too want to thank you for your appearance today, please convey to, you made reference to the best workforce, particularly at the county level, at government, and I would not disagree with that, you've got great folks, and please express to them our appreciation for the hard work they're doing, a lot of them will work a lot of extra hours over the next several months, making sure the producers that they live next door to are taken care of, it's a labor of love, and I want to thank them in advance for all they've done. Thank you for your team, and everything that you're working, I know they're working really hard at it. I would like to just reiterate one more time how important the average production history is and making that work. The intensity of your answer a while ago on making sure that RMA and FSA work together on the decision tools and that there's no conflicts, I would hope you'd bring that same kind of intensity to getting a hard look at whatever the barriers might be with respect to getting the average production history adjustments available to producers, particularly in those areas of our country that have been really hard hit, I don't know that it has to be an all or nothing kind of circumstance, and so I'd appreciate you continuing to push, if you've got the authority to contract out some of that kind of thing, if that needs to get done, so it is important to us, and I appreciate your efforts so far. Most of what we've said, we've talked about the things that we're concerned about going forward, again, please don't let that taint the hard work you've already done, and the recognition for that, that your team has put in place. My producers are just normally anxious at the beginning of every farm bill, this isn't their first rodeo, they've seen it before, your FSA folks and RMA folks have seen it as well, so we'll get through these transition periods, and quickly, hopefully, and with as little impact, negative impact as we need. We know that's your goal, we're on the same side, we just wanted to make sure that we're doing our job to make sure that the resources available to you, that's been made available to you are properly structured. So again, thank you very much for being here. Under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing, where we made open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplemental written responses from the witnesses, you've mentioned several times, you'll get us written responses to some things posed by the members of this hearing, the Subcommittee on General Farm Commodities and Risk Management, adjourn.